Okay, we're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's order. Stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Greatown.
Here.
additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Item A.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add to the agenda collective bargain agreement with the 72nd District Court. As item 11A B, I guess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion for approval of the agenda.
We'll move.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, minutes of previous meetings, item A through B.
I make a motion to approve and file the minutes of 11-9-17 Commissioners Meeting and the 12-7-17 Standing Committee Meeting.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item six, no proclamations, consent agenda, items A through H.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move at this time to approve items 7A through 7H on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item eight, reports of standing in special committees. Commissioner Greatown.
The only thing I would like to mention is that the Metropolitan Planning Group has been working with the city of Algonac to try to figure out exactly where they want to go and what they want to do. And they have put together a survey that is out there publicly right now. So if you're from the Algonac area or just interested in seeing what that survey looks like, take a look at it and go ahead and fill that survey out. It kind of helps the, give some direction to the city as to where you think they may want to go or they think they may want to go. So, that was the only thing I had.
Okay.
David.
Nothing tonight.
No, sir.
Greg.
We had an emergency management meeting today and they're looking at having, and under Sheriff Buckley was running the meeting so quickly, he's fast, too. If, they're looking at putting a program together, I think, is it the City of Port Huron that does it now with the training?
City of Port Huron.
Citizens Police Academy. They're looking at doing a training program where they're going to teach or educate people on fire, in fire safety and police, so that they could have some volunteers. So if they needed some help with possibly blocking off roads at an incident, or maybe watching down wires, or they have some people that help just in an office situation on occasion. So it's just a way to get people to get some information, get a little understanding, and maybe they can help out. Everybody seems to be understaffed. I really see it out in the western end when you have the fire departments and they have such little manpower certain times of the day. If there was, you know, volunteer corps that they could call in on an accident where they could actually just help, you know, block the traffic from going to the scene where they could put their people on the incident itself. So, kind of interesting. They're looking at putting something together and having some training set up. So if you hear any rumblings, that's what might be, they might be looking for people that have an interest.
Okay.
I will not comment on the SEMCOG Parks Initiative since our chair is the chair of that committee.
I was going to report on that. That's why I'm deferring to you, Mr. Chairman.
Howard?
Nothing to report this time.
Got a couple things. Back on Friday, we had met with the individual that's the head of the selection committee for the NJCAA, which they're looking at the Women's National Volleyball Tournament and the Women's Basketball Tournament.
And the NJCAA is what?
National Junior College Association. So this would be housed at the new facilities located at the, well, the old McMoran Hockey Arena, which they've redone that. If you get a chance to go see the facilities in there, they're pretty awesome. A couple of things, we would have never even been able to even remotely bid on one of these previously because there's never a facility nice enough to be able to host one of these. Both of these are of the magnitude of silver sticks, as far as room nights and how big these things are, okay? I got to give Marcy Fogel a ton of credit from the CVB for putting meetings together, tours, had a luncheon with them, large representation from our Blue Meets Green groups at Down, you know, and just kind of importance and significance of this event. I can tell you the guy was totally impressed with all the local support. And generally, these events do better in smaller communities. Like you said, they were in Phoenix for something last year. Yeah, Phoenix doesn't care if you're there or not, you know? So, I mean, hopefully, we can get one of them, you know, put our best foot forward because I think there's other opportunity. I don't think there's anything else more they could have done to promote. I mean, they went to, they had logos on all the doors of all the places they visited, to, you know, fleece coats and, you know, all this stuff. Marcy, she did a, she did a bang-up job on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you, if you land this, would you be able to get it every year thereafter, or do they move it every year to a different location?
You don't screw it up, you can keep it, long and short of it.
Okay.
Pretty much. You know, some of them have been, and there's one that's been in Danville. I can't remember. It's like the baseball one that's been there for like 20 years. He said the whole town just embraces it and, you know, says there's nothing out there but the whole town, really. And, you know, that's what these want. A lot of it has to do with the college experience for the athletes. He talked a lot about that, you know, having these kids getting that college experience, you know, and, you know, those types of things. So, real promising. I was, like I said, I got to give Marcy a ton of credit and really happy to be part of it. On Monday, we met at the Underground. The EDA had their meeting there. Had five different businesses that were all startups from the area and what they've done, you know, that, how they started over there, that was, you know, using the different support mechanisms and, you know, all of them now employ six, eight, 10, 12 people, computer people, but kind of that thing that we're always talking about, you know, the next wave of jobs. And, you know, a lot of them weren't kids, to be quite honest, either, and just the support of the Underground and how well that incubator's taken off over there and now, you know, good, good employment and opportunities. A lot of these companies, they need a, they need a front door to their business, per se, you know? So when they have meetings, they can take them somewhere. You're not meeting at your kitchen table, right? I mean, because, let's face it, I mean, the world runs on these things now, and it's really provided that kind of, you know, front door for a lot of these things. So, it's pretty promising. Parks and Rec. So yes, I am the Parks and Rec Task Force Chair for SEMCOG. We had our meeting, I was downtown Detroit yesterday for actually two separate meetings, spent, spent all day down there. And the Parks and Rec piece of it, it's real interesting because here we have St. Clair County Parks and Rec, we've got the Millage, we've been able to build the facilities out, you know, do a great job with this. And then there's others in the room. One of the fellows from Frazier that I got to know, the mayor of Frazier, Frazier's shutting down their Parks and Rec, right? So, I mean, you have kind of, you know, one extreme to the other. So, a lot of just initial brainstorming, those types of things. But as I said yesterday in a meeting, I want an action plan that comes out of there. I mean, we can all sit together, a lot of great connections. I mean, it's a vast representation of anybody and everybody involved in the Parks and Rec world in the state of Michigan. So just the connections alone, to be quite honest, are extremely helpful. But just to really to work with the region, because everything we talk about's the region, right? I love going down Detroit to do things, but I don't want to live in that stuff. I can assure you that, right? So.
Well, I think it speaks very well of our county, you know, in this seven-county region, to have our chair selected as chair of the whole area. This is Washtenaw, Wayne, Macomb, Genesee, not Genesee, Livingston, and Monroe County.
Mark Broschu attended. I gave, give a lot of kudos to Mark for coming down. And then Dave Struck was there, too. So those are my two crutches, per se, because, I mean, you know, those guys know a lot about it and there's a lot of experience between the two of them.
Just another quick plug for St. Clair County and our parking rec. My memory is correct and reference to Jackson County, a very similar county, we have received $13 million in grants where they've received a million over the same time period. And we have an excellent park system in our county. It improves the quality of life. Like I told you, you brought up last week, I believe it's Frazier, it's eliminating their parking rec.
Yeah.
For whatever reason, their community is not embracing it and going to spend the monies for their parking recs. Where Oakland County is partnering with the DNR and they're putting in a, taking over the landfill, or not landfill, the gravel pits right beside Mount Holly and putting in a all four-wheel drive thing for Jeeps. And it's 235 acres, I believe, that's just going to be a park for Jeeps, ATVs.
Yeah.
Bill? If I can jump back, I forgot I wanted to do this, but buried in the, when I say buried in the consent agenda, we received, again, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So I just want to pay attention and give kudos to Danielle and to the entire Finance Department for St. Clair County. It's the highest award that you can get in county government for financing. So Danielle and your entire team, Kerry, your leadership, thank you guys for that recognition.
I don't think we ever got one when Kerry was running it, but. She got one every year she was there, too. That's the end of my report. Citizens wishing to address the board at this time. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board? I have one here from Sue McConnell, how nice District One Commissioner is. Did you put that up there, Greg?
I saw her.
No unfinished business come before us. A lot of new business. We've got a lot of items here. We're going to go through them relatively quick. There are things that were discussed at our previous meeting. So if we go through them, seem to go through them fairly fast. They've been on our agenda before. Item A, the approval of the county disbursements for October 2017.
This time I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for October 2017 in the amount of $37,462,957.94.
Second.
Discussion.
Thirty-seven million.
Roll call.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baum.
Yes. Item B, Policy 342, the salary and wage revisions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the revisions to Policy 342, salary and wage. And in reviewing those, many of them include substituting our new Human Resources Director for the County Administrator.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C, Resolution 1738.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move at this time to adopt Resolution 1738, adopting 2018 Special Revenue Fund Budget and amending the 2017 General and Special Revenue Fund Budgets.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Resolution 17-37.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt Resolution 17-37, 17-36, establishing elected and non-elected officers' wages for 2018.
Discussion.
Who's that?
Roll call.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
No.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Resolutions, item E, Resolution 1737.
I move to adopt Resolution 1737, establishing wages for County Association of Non-Union Employees for 2018.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Resolution 1739.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to adopt Resolution 1739, establishing compensation for the road commission for 2018.
Support.
Discussion.
If I could, just have a comparison to last year's.
I believe they are the same as last year.
You know, I got to give those guys a lot of credit. All three of those guys have been around as long as I've been on the board and have always just done a really good job over there and stuff. So, I know our township officials, which are generally the point of contact for those, they've been very happy with them, too. So, Howard?
Just, just a comment. They do a remarkable job, especially when we consider that the state hasn't exactly been on top of making sure our local road commission gets sufficient funding. And the state of Michigan needs to step up the plate. They really do. Because they're, they're hanging on by, you know, just hanging on, shall we say.
David?
And I just want to give kudos to our road commission also and everybody that works for the road commission. The pay that they're going to be getting, the three commissioners that work for our road, the one is around $9,000. That's a chair. That's for the entire year. And they work with 23 townships in the entire county. They also do our expressways. And they do a fantastic jobs.
Yeah, you had a lot of dealings with them in your previous life, too, as a.
A lot of work they have, they put in for them.
Mr. Chairman, also, these individuals are very active on a regional and statewide basis with the different associations, following the legislation and best practices. And I think very highly of them and their director.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item G, the contract approval for Jim Logstun.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement with Jane Lockston for the landfill consulting services for a term of January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2018, in the amount not to exceed $20,000.
Second.
Discussion. Got a funny story about Mr. Logstun. So longtime waste management employee. I had met him down in Algonac, actually. We were down at one of the.
Over on Fruit Street?
Nah, they were giving a bunch of property away down to the waste management. Was giving a bunch of land away to the flats down there.
Oh.
So I always kind of kept in touch with him. He was always taking my phone calls when I'd landfill questions, so on and so forth. And he was retired one day. He says, I'm retired now, I'm doing some consulting. I says, well, we're looking for somebody to do some, do some work for us. So I gave his name and corporate counsel and a couple others, you know, brought him in. And met him, asked some questions, you know, and he starts walking down the hallway and Gary looks, he goes, you better hire that guy right now. Before he got out the door, he said, hey, you're hired. And he's just been, as many of you know, he's helped negotiate a lot of contracts. He's helped with the direct billing for the cities. He was one that orchestrated that for the cities and townships and things. And it's, it's well-spent money. So, roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Baum.
Yes. Item H, Commission on Aging Amendment to the Bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Commission on Aging's amendment to their bylaws.
Support.
Scott?
Yes.
I have a comment. Our new administrator, Jenny Posey, has been taking the reins of the Commission on Aging this year. And there are many changes and updates that are occurring, and I think they're very positive for the Commission on Aging and for our senior citizens.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item I, the Contract Approval for MSU.
This time I'd like to move to approve the agreement with the Michigan State University Extension for a term of January 1, 2018, through December 31 of 2018, in the amount of $26,401.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item K, the 2018 Letter of Agreement in Region 10 for the RSTAT Services.
J.
Should be J.
J. Oh, I'm sorry, jumped ahead. Contract Approval for the Community Corrections Grant.
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2018 Community Correction Grant Agreement in the amount of $316,030.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item K, now, 2018 Letter of Agreement with Region 10 for the RSTAT.
This time I'd like to move to approve the Letter of Agreement with Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan for Prevention Services for the Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant in the amount of $73,040.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item L, the 2018 Marine Safety Grant.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the fiscal year 2018 Marine Safety Program Grant Application in the amount of $324,107.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item M, the 2018 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program with CMH.
I think that's, which one?
M.
Yep. Got it. Thank you. Move to approve the subcontract with St. Clair County Community Mental Health for the fiscal year 2018 Michigan Mental Health.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item N, the Sheriff Contract for Police Services with the Township of Port Huron.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the Law Enforcement Service Agreement with Port Huron Township for a term of January 1, 2018, through December 30, 2020, in the total amount of $2,252,659.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item O, the Landfill Saw Grant Award.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Commission approve the Stormwater Asset Management and Wastewater Program Grant Agreement for the landfill in the amount of $203,708.
Support.
Discussion. Do we got to do a roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item P, the Michigan Coastal Zone Grant Application for the Blue Ways Strategic Plan.
Mr. Chair, I move the adoption Resolution 1741, authorizing the application of the Michigan Coastal Zone Management Program Grant for a Blue Ways Strategic Plan in the amount not to exceed $46,000.
Support.
Discussion. Had a conversation, we talk about the Blue Ways Plan as part of the Parks and Rec. Talk a little bit about the Drain Commissioner working with our Parks and Rec. As far as when they're clearing out ditches now and those things to make them accessible for canoe and kayak and those types of things. Actually, I had a follow-up phone call. I talked to Candace Miller today. She's the new Drain Commissioner down in Macomb County. And they're working really closely with it, Parks and Rec, which previously they didn't because of, one of the individuals from Macomb was there. I mentioned that yesterday and they were like, nah, we don't, doesn't happen down here, you know? So, just, just the, you know, ability to, you know, Bob's willingness to work to increase those types of things. I got to give him a lot of credit on that. So, just kind of a little side note, didn't. So, roll call.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item Q, Resolution 1745.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to adopt Resolution 1745, pledging full faith and credit for the Stocks Creek and Branches Drain District Bonds.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item R, Resolution 1746.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt Resolution 17-46, pledging, pledging full faith and credit for the Green Drain District Bonds.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item S, the 2018 Board Meeting Schedule.
I move to approve the 2018 Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
Second.
Discussion, always possibly subject to change. So.
I'm glad to see that in this year's schedule, we've already made the changes for November and December in the schedule instead of waiting till later in the year.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item T, the amended 2017 Apportionment Report.
This time I'd move to adopt Resolution 17-44, amending Resolution 17-23, portioning taxes for 2017.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatown.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Baum.
Yes. Item U, the Boards and Commissions' Reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Board and Commission's reappointments as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item V, the Public Guarding Manning Table.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the public guardian request to add a part-time case manager position to their manning table.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item W, Resolution 1734.
I would move to adopt Resolution 1734, waiving the investment interest earned.
Second.
Whatever. Whatever.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Greatown?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Bone?
Yes. Items X, the 1735.
I move at this time to adopt Resolution 17-35 regarding the per diems for boards and commissions.
Support.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Greatown?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item Y, the Resolution 1740 adopting the 80/20 cost share model.
Mr. Chairman, I move that resolution, which adopts the 80/20 cost share model, this is for our healthcare costs.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Excuse me.
Mr. Tommy?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Greatown?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item Z, the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Fort Grashit.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the Law Enforcement Service Agreement with Fort Grashit Township for the term of 1/118 through 12/31/20.
Support.
Discussion.
Yep. Just curious if I could ask Administration, I know that there were maybe two questions that came up in regards to that contract from Fort Grashit. And they talked in terms of maybe reopening that next year or the year after to talk about those terms. Where are we on that?
I did have a discussion with the township supervisor on some possible changes she would like to see. So, we will be sitting down with Administration and the Sheriff's Office to see if that's a workable solution for both parties. They're looking to maybe adjust some shifts and some coverages and do some additional things in the future.
Would approving this contract for three years, would that be in any way get in the way of doing this negotiations next year?
No. No, you have the ability to do an addendum to the contract if both parties agree.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Mr. Greatown?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item AA, the landfill 2017 leach aid.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the 2017 Leach Aid Force Main Modification Change Order for the landfill.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Greatown?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item AB, Resolution 1748.
This time, I'd move to adopt Resolution 17-48 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the 72nd District Court.
Support.
Discussion.
Is this our... How many do we have left? Two?
I think that...
We will have three left. We have two that we have a tentative agreement with that have yet to have the ratification vote, and three still pending.
Okay.
Twenty-one or twenty-three? What's the number?
Twenty bargaining units.
Twenty bargaining units. Carrie, how many did you say we'd have left?
Pardon?
How many did you say are left?
We have three bargaining units left, and there are two of them that you haven't ratified yet in addition to that. But we do have a tentative agreement at the table. We're just waiting for the union's ratification vote.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy?
Yes.
Mr. Hydeman?
Yes.
Mr. Greatown?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Administrators report.
Last week, our bids for animal control shelter services were due. As you remember, we did end up extending the bid deadline by about a month for that. And unfortunately, we did not receive any bids from any groups that are interested in bidding on shelter services. We did receive letters from two different organizations that had some interest, but they said the timing for them isn't good and that they don't feel it's a project they can take on right now.
How long did you keep that open for, Carrie? I think that was a sixty or ninety day?
It ended up being about sixty days. The initial was thirty, and then we extended it another thirty.
Okay.
Carrie, in your discussions with those two parties, do you see feasibility of this in the future? Or should we start looking at other alternatives?
You know, one of the groups that bid, they are currently... Or that did not bid but sent a letter, they are currently undertaking a big project right now already. So, I think they felt just to take on two big projects that they didn't have enough staff and volunteers to be able to dedicate to it. And the other group just pretty much said it's, you know, the timing wasn't right for their board at this time. So, I think the door's still open with either of those two groups, but I'm not sure. We haven't reached out to them. We just got the letters from them. So, we haven't had any follow-up discussion.
Are you planning to with both of those?
Yeah, we were just gonna reach out to them just to see, you know, as far as timeline, is this something you're thinking that you might be interested in? Ninety days or nine years type thing to see what direction the board might want to go after that.
I think it's a really good idea after we've gone through this process to go back at least to the people who expressed interest, see what their concerns are, and see if there's some other approach that might be beneficial to both of us.
Okay. Any other questions?
None.
We had a resignation on the retirement board for our citizen-at-large, so we will have a vacancy starting January. So, if anybody has someone, it can be anyone in the county. They cannot be a county employee or affiliated with the county's retirement system. But we do have an opening for a citizen-at-large starting in January. And one other thing, the House and Senate both passed some versions of pension and post-employment benefit legislation changes. They haven't finally cleared, but we suspect that we... They will. There are a few items in there that we're kinda keeping an eye on that are a big unknown. And one of them says the Treasury Department will annually publish and set your actuarial assumptions. Depending what those are, that could have a huge impact on our funding level and our actuarial valuation. I believe our assumptions are very conservative, so I don't think we'll have a big impact, but it's just kind of an unknown that we're watching. And they also had some pre-funding requirement language that I feel we're meeting most of it, but we're still kinda going through the analysis with some of the different agencies to figure out what exactly it means. The language was a little cryptic, so had a lot of discussions with people trying to figure out what they're really asking us to do. So, once we get a good handle on that, we'll let you know what impact they may or may not have on our systems and our required contributions.
Carrie, do you think there's gonna be anything punitive as far as from our retirement standards, we're in pretty good shape?
Yes. Our pension system, I think, well, at over 90% funded is in excellent shape. And our assumptions are conservative, and we regularly do experience studies where we're updating, you know, the mortality tables we use and all of our assumptions besides our interest rate. I know some municipalities update them once every 20 years, so there's rules on how often you have to do that. And we're already complying with those. You know, the healthcare, they set a minimum level of 40%. You have to be 40% funded or better to be considered adequately funded. And if you're below that, then you have to come forward with a plan on how you are going to achieve a higher funding level.
And that's... And we're below 40?
Yes.
My concern is, are they gonna be punitive to the... Are we gonna have a lot of cost associated that we have to try to show where we're at? Or are we gonna be able to use our money to put in there if that's what we have to?
The thing about the healthcare, though, that's based on what you offer for coverage, okay? So, as I... I've told the retirees a bunch of times, we could put 100 years of life on that thing tomorrow. You're gonna hate your PPO 500, you know. And we've had two lawsuits, you know, that we've been kind of been the case study for the state of Michigan. And the state's ruled in favor of St. Clair County both the times on being able to make changes to those. So, when you say you're a certain percentage funded, that's using those particular set of assumptions, right? So, the assumptions are that this is the, you know, health insurance that you have. Obviously, I know people don't want to hear it, but if changes are made and there's, you know, last time we did some changes to it, which, you know, and I could say weren't not significant, but anytime you make a changes with people, and obviously, they've got fixed incomes and those things, it is, you know, it does cost the money. But to be able to... The pension you had, you know, the pension you're obviously obligated to. So, the healthcare, to say that, you know, you gotta dump a bunch of money into it or whatever, 'cause it's just not us. I've been with, you know, multiple... We're in a lot better shape than most.
Oh.
And we're 32%, 30%, right? And so, what's that tell you about, you know, the rest of the world? There's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be changes tonight, you know, from the legislative. I understand because when these things take a dump, they ultimately come back on the state government, which is ultimately, you know, all the above, you know, ponying up, take care of these things. And we've addressed this for a long time on the board. One thing I will give, you know, if you look back at the history, Carrie and I, how many people, 82 full-time, 12 part-time individuals, you know, through the economic downturn, we've made changes. We just approved the 80/20 cost sharing this evening. As one township official, I won't mention names, down in Macomb Township, they're still on zero copay, $2... Zero deductible $2 copays. And it's a freight train, you know, but they don't have the political wherewithal to make those changes. And that's just a... It's a ticking time bomb, man, that's coming down. And he knows it, but you just have these boards. So, I get where the, you know, the state, nobody likes that. But also, a lot of times, the locals don't make the necessary decisions because when I'm cutting Jay's, Jay's my next-door neighbor, right? And Jay wants to kill me when, you know, we're done doing this. So, that's the political reality in some of, you know, some of the smaller communities. So, I didn't mean to belabor the story, but I mean, you know...
No. Well, there are options. If you're making significant progress, you can have waivers and extensions of time. There does appear to be a lot of leeway in the legislation as it's written.
All right.
Howard, just to comment, you know, we made those changes, what, six, seven, eight years ago that you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
And recently, I would say over the last four years, we haven't had to make any major changes at all in our retiree healthcare. Am I correct in that?
That's correct. We have not made changes, and I would say it's maybe been, yeah, six or eight years.
Yeah. So, you know, you saw that problem way back when, and you got right on it. And I think our retirees appreciate the fact that, you know, you were forthright with them. And as a consequence, we haven't had to make any drastic changes at all.
I had Carrier on a spreadsheet, probably three years ago, and it was the assumptions of seven and a half percent. And it was before the, you know, where we were at in '07, in assuming that we would've had seven and a half percent returns based on, you know, the period of time. Now, granted, the world fell apart, and we lost 33% of our total, you know, monies in that. And everybody assumes, 'cause the stock market's back up, that it's all back up, right? But you lost seven and a... You know, you lost a whole lot of returns, so on and so forth. We would've been like 100% on pension and 70% on healthcare, barring, like I said, the economic downturn didn't hit. Nobody would've predicted that, right? Don't get me wrong. So, we were on the right path for a really long time. So, you know, hence that hit. And now, those are the things that you gotta tweak and adjust and stuff. And when I took that documentation, I took it to the retiree board. And I've been there five or six years ago. Six years ago, they wanted to kill me, you know, when I first came in and said, "Here's the news, right? Here's where we're going." And five years later, they don't like it, you know. They appreciate the honesty, because I think if you're telling them anything else, you're probably lying to them, right? To say that, you know, changes aren't gonna come. I don't want to paint that picture either. So...
If I could, if my memory's correct, can make sure I'm on the right subject. But we go back, I believe it's 66 months, five and a half years ago. We were at $2 million. We're now at right about $45 million of the action that the county's taken to protect the retiree's healthcare. Is that correct?
Our healthcare trust has grown. Beginning this year, we are starting to draw funds down on it because the healthcare funds that were set aside in the pension fund have been exhausted.[1599.41]